Educating, Informing, Serving. TV Keeping Government Honest.
Okay, control that we need to order at six twelve one on May 16th, 2022.
Yeah.
Okay, a motion to adopt the agenda. Anything other than special? If not, all favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? We have two minutes today to do. We have the minutes of the setting, which is in special, we can discuss it.
They may not put this.
Oh, that's good. Are there any additions or corrections to the minutes of May second?
Mr. Chair, I have one addition and one question.
Okay.
So the addition is on page two, under nine committee reports and under personnel committee. I would like to add the sentence after the analysis of the data and its comparison to annual budget is made difficult. Calendar year-to-date overtime is 10% over budget. And then, Kim, my question is under other business. I believe it was in that meeting, you pointed out the award that the town had won.
Yes, on the capital budget.
The capital budget. And I think that would be good to include in the minutes.
Okay.
Do you agree?
Yeah, yeah, because it's historical, yeah.
Okay, great.
Are there any other additions or corrections to the minutes of May second? If not, all favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? I wasn't here, so.
I was finished.
So I make a
Just might want to speak up. I mean, I'm only being Oh, because especially with the ring.
All right, so they're okay. Let's do the minutes of May 16th, which
May ninth.
Oh, sorry, May ninth. May ninth. Do we have any additions or corrections to this special meeting minutes?
Mr. Chair, I do have one question about in the paragraph right before number four, where it says, "The foundation will fix the current problem." Was there any timeline offered that should be captured in the minutes or was there no timeline?
There wasn't a timeline, to my recollection, unless somebody else thinks so.
Well, there was, or impressed by Denise herself, by June first.
Well, she wanted it fixed by June first.
Right. And Bob said he didn't have a problem with that.
Right, so.
So should that be captured in the minutes?
But he did say by, he did say by June first.
Maybe we should just say June Denise asked for it to be done by June first, to be accurate about it.
Yeah, I would just to say a time.
Make that correction, please. Do we have any other additions or corrections to the minutes of May ninth? If not, can I make a motion to accept it?
Is there a motion? Yeah, was in motion yet.
Yeah, so can I make a motion to accept them?
Seven.
Any real discussion? All favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Danny, you are ready to sign the book. You want to do the bids first? The clerk is
Say, isn't that usually rich?
Yeah, he's not here, so.
He wants to do the things.
How about Kathy as vice chairman?
That's fine, yeah.
Guys, we got three bids in. We got bids from Daniels, AS Clark, and Amy Gregory. That one is for the Brooklyn, Brooklyn, and Adams.
Also, how many bids for each do we have?
Three to bid each. Three first.
All right, so why don't you do the pinky book first?
Thanks. This is Jamie Gregory. Hundred eighty-three thousand five hundred. This is from Jamie Gregory, trucking and debating.
Right. How much?
Labor materials. Hundred eighty-three thousand five hundred.
This is the pinky, right?
Eighteen block.
Okay.
Daniels Construction. Two hundred and thirty, two hundred and thirty-seven hundred thousand three seventy-five.
Okay.
And this will be AS Clark and Sons. We bid two hundred and twelve hundred thousand four hundred and forty-five for the Hinkley Brook, all written number seventeen. Includes but not limited to recast concrete blocks seven by twelve by fifty with wing walls, structure gravel, brick gravel, fifty-eight of dark rail with four anchors. Stir area seated and launched. And that's from AS Clark. So I have three, the two bids are for Hinkley. Did you want to look at these now?
Usually before you get the vote on.
Yeah.
Jamie Gregory trucking and excavating. Hundred and seventy-four, one hundred and seventy-four hundred thousand.
Even? Hundred seventy-four thousand even?
Yeah. AS Clark and Sons. We bid, we bid two hundred and sixty-two hundred thousand ninety for the Lutro Culver, number twenty.
That's two hundred and sixty-two thousand?
Two, six, two, zero, ninety.
Okay.
I mean, I make that up to six, I don't know. It's like it was five and then it's six.
Let's see, the two fifty-two, looks like two sixty-two, I think.
And Daniels Construction. Five hundred eighty-four thousand dollars.
Five eight four?
Yes.
Zero, zero, zero?
Yes.
Okay, so the policy is, is that we vote in the bids now and then Danny will need a bid. And then at some, I guess at the next meeting, unless there's a reason that we need to do it before, we'll go around. Except, we recommend that. Thank you for being, appreciate it. Danny, have you heard any news on FEMA?
I have not heard nothing from FEMA at all. I would want to notify them about the bids and just make sure that we're all set to move forward. They say we just move with our policy, so.
Well, I guess you and Bill can deal with that. Bill put the federal way, is there anything we need to know there?
We haven't seen nothing back from that yet. There's been no questions. Been a few questions with the federal. There's been a few questions on some of the the raft work on Town Road and stuff and some permanent, but I think Bill sent all that stuff in and they've been fine with it.
I think honestly, yeah, I saw their face, I thank you, they got it.
Yeah. Nothing there. So I added nothing on the FEMA or the federal page. The Spurlock Drive site visit, I weren't at the last meeting, so I don't know what.
So we need to pick a date to go and see what they want to do. When they want to have their fence.
Can I interject here, please? May I? This is Pamela Spurlock. I think Patrick and I have found another way around where our, we can install a privacy fence behind our existing rock wall. And then it will not be any question about the right of way. And what we review until we can replace our front windows is have an aesthetically pleasing trellis in front of our windows to help sound dampen. And so I don't think we have to have Danny come out and involve the town. I think we have found a way that can please our family until we can afford further upgrades.
Can you, can you explain, Kim, where, where you're supposed to place them? Behind the stone wall?
Behind the rock wall. Behind the existing rock wall that runs beside our red barn. So it would be, you know, up where it's in ground and not where our house, right in front of our house where there is no rock wall.
I mean, you guys have the policy about nothing in the right of way, so it's not in the right of way.
It's not in the right of way, so I think you guys, as long as it's not in the town's right of way, Pamela, you're good to go.
All right, so I think we figured a way and also it will be cost-saving as well. So, thank you. Thank you for being willing to meet with us, but I think we have something to work around and appreciate your time.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, and we are finding an alternative.
Okay, we have a wait permit for Norman Transit. We need to have a motion to approve that and have Bill sign it. Somebody make that motion. Who? You have second?
Second.
Do we have any other discussion? If not, all favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, so it's okay. Danny, are you going to be here for the rest of the meeting or whatever?
Yeah, yep.
Okay, because we need to talk about the park. We could either do it now or we could do it at the committee board. I was going to be here.
The guy is going to deal with the tree.
Kenny, you have anything?
Yes, the cybersecurity project, Bill got a call that they're supposed to be here sometime this week to actually
Start it, actually start it?
Actually start it, do the wiring, bring it up through the floor, put everything on the wall. It won't be switched over, there's going to be another date where they're actually going to disconnect and reconnect. So they couldn't give us a specific date or time this week, they just said this week. That's Pardon? No, that's with Dominion Tech. This is the major work. I'm not really sure where Bill is on the Green Mountain Power and Russell. I asked if he has connected with Culver, Lawrence and Lober. And he was supposed to send them an email to see if they're going to start talking and when they're going to get it done.
Yeah.
Because the easements have been signed and recorded, so as far as I know, everything is set to go. The heat pumps, Gus finished the disconnects, so June Brent is supposed to be here to put in the post office and hook up this one.
In June?
Yeah.
That's another couple of weeks.
Yeah, that's what he had said and I'll follow up with him otherwise. Today was tax day, our last quarter, so this ends the actual tax year at four o'clock. So anything after today's date is a felony percent penalty charge to it. A reminder that the school district is having their townwide school district meeting, seven o'clock Tuesday at the school, the 24th. We will be voting from the floor. So as many voters, just like it's a town meeting, except being a town, it's a school district meeting. We have a new router now for Wi-Fi that I hooked up on Friday. And so we now have a secure password for Wi-Fi and we have a public access that's unsecure. So if we ever need one, I think I posted on the door, on the table, and you guys must have a copy here too, that public access. And we'll have full Wi-Fi up here.
There's no code for the public.
Nope. You just want to hook to that one. If you were to get on the other one, you'll need a code, which we do not like to give out.
Can I ask a question about that? Do you foresee that the router will have better service, better capacity than the previous one? In the last minute, Bill had an action item with the planning commission to make sure that the Wi-Fi was adequate for their meeting. And I'm wondering if that happened, if it was adequate.
This router should be, because instead of having that long skinny box that's really old for detail, they sent us a little round disc and believe it or not, that's the most recent updated one, should be much stronger and faster. I got it in my home also and it made a big difference. But now, once cybersecurity is done, there's actually going to be one up here. And then when it does move, and even if it doesn't get up here right away, once it gets
Another router is going to be up here, is that what you
Right, yeah. And then there's, everything's going to move to Bill's office on the wall there, which brings it one more floor up. So we're going to, no matter what, we're going to be stronger, because we're coming from the bottom floor up right now.
Okay.
We're moving into 24th century. Seriously.
Let's leave our turn.
Thank you, Kim. Yep, the next select board meeting, I'll be giving you an untagged dog list. So anybody who's not licensed, that should have been by April 1st. At that point, you can review it and then we'll pass it with your permission on to the constable, who then follows up with phone calls, if not a visit. And then we've also, Michelle's been keeping track and so has Mike of Dogs that were never licensed, that should have been.
Well, has any news with the police?
No, July 1st, we should hear from the sheriff's department whether or not animal control contract is set to review. Also, the next meeting will be the beginning of the first of June. I'll give you all our balance sheet, so we can see where we end with our fiscal year, June 30th. Yeah, that's all I've got.
Any questions for anyone? We don't have to deal with this for much, so it's done, so committee deputized. Senator, Doug, you want to?
Yeah, Henry Bolz, he's going to be there, he's 29th. His wife came in and asked if Kate couldn't get paid it. So I have custom paintbrush and I haven't painted it, other than hire somebody to do it. So that's done. Be happy with that. She also had a form for the D and E fill out, which she could get reimbursed for, some of the very expensive, and I signed that too. For her.
John, thank you for doing that painting.
Hire somebody to get it, get some paint, get a brush, but I had to paint the brush, which was a bit
Especially for Henry.
I have a link for me?
The young town secretary, Ifor, has cleaned up the secretaries, they look pretty good. There's a few spots here, I will bring his attention, but they look pretty good.
Okay. It's sometime Danny, on another note, the flags, is there any chance you can ask one of the guys to bring a, we should be a bucket? Bring the flags to the office and just leave them in the lobby?
Yeah, Dave said he put them upstairs, I think, Danny. I brought them over and
Yeah, they went to the folks' room, sure.
Because sometime soon, I'm sure that Jason and Doug will be contacting me, wanting to come in and pick them up. I think we should have enough to be able to cover this.
When do you need them by? I mean, we can bring them down tomorrow.
Yeah, they can bring them down tomorrow. I don't know when they're going to ask for them. I'm pretty sure we should have enough left over that I didn't order any this year.
There's plenty, plenty of fire, feel like we'll fuck that up, so.
Yeah.
Am I ready for me? You don't have any, nothing? Parks and Recreation? Alan, you want to say anything, Danny, or shall I just summarize our meeting? How would you like to handle it?
Well, if you want to summarize your meeting and then I'll update what's happened since then.
Sisters and I met Wednesday, I think it was, with Mike Fields and Adam to review where we, how we move forward. And it was to my understanding that the logging company was going in there on Thursday, which I think they had, to clean up.
Turned out, actually, it was Friday, they had an equipment issue, they went in Friday.
The next question, though, that comes about is for Danny, is how soon can the town start to do something? I realize you have other things to do, but if you could give a day here and there, try to get the parking lot, you know, graded, culverts and all those kinds of things, so.
I'd like to get the two Better Back Road grants done, which will be starting this week, which are, they're not really big projects. Then I want to just get them out of the way, because this is the second year with them. Then after that, I hope to see a problem, we can go up and do a good portion of it at a time.
No?
I did, you got the email on what I came up with?
Yeah, it's much better.
And I did receive the email. Around what time would that be? How much time do you need to get the back porch done?
It'd probably be at least three weeks before we get that done. And we might have days in between, you know, we might go out and do a little bit, but definitely after that, we have the Wright Orchard grant to do, which the machine's already up there for that. And then we have the Cambridge Port Road, just from Misty Lane down, that was the other project to do.
Also depends on how much rain we have in the western districts, so.
Yeah, you know, we'll get the grading and everything in between to do too, but
When do you leave today?
I was not, I was supposed to leave on Thursday and I think it's going to be moved to actually Wednesday morning now.
This week?
Of this week. And then the first, Memorial, Memorial is the third, even with the Monday, so that Tuesday.
Alan, could you just refresh our memory? If Danny's timeframe is three weeks and the goal is to open on Memorial Day, how does that mesh together for you?
The trails will be ready, we just don't have a parking lot ready. So people can walk the trails and, as they have.
We have the culverts for that project already at the town graveyard and I had also got the road fiber. They dropped that off last week for that project. The gravel will just be coming from either Eastman Sandy Gravel, if they had it there closer, or from Sosoma.
So I was up there today and walked the area that excavator, that long view operator worked on Friday. And so we went out to the end of the red trail, out by where the picnic area is, and where we hope to someday Halloween could start it there and work this way back towards the easy access trail, back to the landing. And yeah, got all, got that all cleaned up. So there's a couple of wet areas, he smoothed out and then he pushed rush back. And was actually able to hide a lot of it and make it quite a bit better. Was going to pull some of the stumps that were on that easy access that we caught from the parking lot over to the red lot, even though that was kind of a pretty deep forest, but we had a big machine there, so rather than do it later, if we get to do the work with smaller machine. Then he was headed up to, and he had water bar up through the lot, the logging road that went up towards the yellow trail and smoothed that a lot, put that water bars in there. That all looked good, and what it looks like right now. It looked good this morning. He then was going to go and, he's going to work again tomorrow and do all the logging roads where they went up into the hem lot, up to the high elevation away from the trails. Just put the water bars in there. And I think he intended to do some smoothing around the edges of the parking lot. Just tidy that up a little bit. Yeah. He's hoping to do that. But the work he's done is created some fresh soil available. He had some seed and seeded the area up near the picnic area where he exposed soil there. Didn't have good, but he did. But he used up the seed that he had. So I'd like to ask the board if we were to purchase seed and then if you say yes tonight, I'll go get it tomorrow seed it when the ground is moist and somewhere we should get a good catch. So prices about seed that are checked on. The most desirable seed would be conservation mixture with clover. And that could be a hundred and sixty-five to two hundred dollars per seed. The other cheaper seed recommended was a fifty-fifty mixture of annual rock grass and buckwheat. And that would be probably around a hundred and thirty, a hundred and forty dollars. I kind of prefer to do the conservation.
Yeah, personally, conservation mix is a better mix, I think.
Correct. So I just go to Earthkins and get that. But we have figured a chunk of money in there from the timber sale, spotters using some of that money for shooting. Another point of interest out of that, seventeen thousand five hundred that we have from the logging job, the numbers that Danny came up with turned out for base and top dressing and culverts. The cost, he'd estimated for materials with the town doing the work, was nine thousand six hundred and fifty-two dollars imported by The cost being estimated for materials with the town doing the work was $9,652.45 cents. So that would leave us $8,847 out of the logging. So I think it seems like we should be able to buy some seed, but that's up to your votes.
Anybody have a problem with that?
That figure does include the culvert steps would be necessary in the parking lot?
Yes. To do what we talked about, yes.
The money's there, that's what it's for, let's do it. Do you need a motion for this?
I would do. I know that we authorized the purchase of this material for the use in the.
Get the number.
$9,652.45 cents, did I understand that?
Well, $9,000 is what would be for materials to do the work in the parking lot. But I'm only, right now, I'm only asking, I need to go buy grass and, or conservation.
But yeah, but make the motion to do the same thing. So make the motion that includes the culvert gravel and the grass seed.
Well, the grass seed would add $160 to that.
Well, if I get conservation mix, it could be closer to $200.
So add $200 mostly.
So you correct me if I'm wrong, Alan, I think that would be $9,852.45 cents?
Yeah. Do we have a second there? Do we have any other discussion? If not, all of them say aye. Oppose? Go ahead.
Do we have a charge at Erskine's?
We used to. I used that same price at W and W. I know I just paid myself on 65 or 169 for a bag of conservation at W and W. We have an account there. Erskine's.
In one of the, I mean, in Budwell?
Carolbuck.
New thing.
Old W and W.
W and W. I think we still have one at Erskine's.
Yeah, because we've still been getting bills from them. We just got one not too long ago. I thought we got something in, but you should be able to discharge it.
Okay, I'll call each place before I head in one direction or the other, go with a cheaper price and do one full charge.
Okay, and let me know, and then I'll call and let them know that you have permission to go ahead and charge. W and W likes to know who's going to charge if it's not one of us.
Yeah, I got permission from Ken.
The magic word, just make a motion, not me.
Personnel committee, do we have anything from them?
Kathy was able to do the corner review for Bill. So they're on the finished floor.
I'd like to just know, to get the copy of personnel policy sometime soon. We have never received one.
Yes, so Kathy and I provided the information that was missing, presumably mainly the revised grievance policy. I provided that in hard copy and PDF to Bill. And so I think we need to have an action item that Bill should get a copy of the personnel policy to each of the employees. And we can follow up on that in the next meeting, make sure it's been done. We could add that to the meeting.
Just put it in the minutes and I'll make sure that it gets done. As long as you have all the corrections.
And if he doesn't, then just let me know, but I believe that's what he had asked for, right, Ken?
Yes, it does. I had told, I did tell Bill, and he said, give him up here, my friend.
And just FYI, they do need to be the copies of the signed version of the personnel policy. And that's on file with Bill. And thank you for pointing that out, Danny, that it's not going to be soon.
Okay, no problem.
Thank you.
Bill, you committed? Tim, I think you did some of it already, but you want to?
Yeah, the elevator, there's still no discussion on that. Last I knew, Four Seasons was the only one and.
Well, he was going to go back and, and I think Crown Point and somebody else.
And we haven't heard anything.
Yeah, and I asked Bill this week and he hasn't heard anything from the architect, so I don't know what they've done.
He paid a bill, but that's it.
And he punctured him, Jim, right?
He punctured me about Jim.
All right, the waste water, we had lots of activity. Bill and Rich and I and the crew from Taiwan and from the state met on, I guess it was Thursday. At 9:30, it wraps into almost 8:30, and we will know what they're going to do, what they're not going to do. And everything is all ready to go, and so they are now beginning the study. And the study. I don't know why I don't have a list, but I believe that in 30, in 30 days or 35 days, they're going to come back with a preliminary of findings of what they're doing. And so it's happening and they, if all goes according to plan, in 2023, sometime in April or May, they will present the actual bid and procedure for the town to vote. But there'll be at least four general meetings with the town to ask questions and get progress. So officially, they have started. So that's, that's the risk of the start.
Did they present the project plan?
Yeah, they did do it. I don't have a copy with me, but.
Do you think it can be possible to present it at the next?
Yes, I was, I was going to do that if Bill wasn't here today and I was going to have to do it, so. I'll get a project plan to go.
Thank you.
And that's it. So the waste water committee, the waste water project is officially been kicked off myself last Thursday. Do we have any other business?
I just wanted to mention, which I forgot under my clerk business, our lease is up, our five-year lease on our copier, the Canon copier. So right now, we're going month to month, because even if we renewed our lease and upgraded our copier, they wouldn't be in. So we're on a month-to-month, and I'm waiting for a quote possibility for a colored copier. And then we can do away with the small printers that both the listers and Bill have to get colored copies for different things at $100 of cartridge from color.
Yeah, I think it's very expensive.
So he's bringing in on-house staples and all that and see if we can bring down the price, but at least the price will come up some for color, but we may be still on the city ballpark. I'm waiting for that, so that's in the next, I'll let you know when I get it.
Is there any public comment? Doug?
Yeah, I have a whole bunch of things I'd like to bring up again. Some things I had brought up before, but nobody seemed to have any answers. So tonight, I'm going to ask you to answer. The first is the Emerald Ash Bore. There doesn't seem to be anybody paying attention to it, even though we know it's on its way or even here. So what is the town doing about the Emerald Ash Bore at this point? And I have a follow-up question to that.
Nothing.
Okay, nothing. Okay, is there a town policy having to do with the ownership of trees within the town right of it?
Yes.
Is it written somewhere?
Yes.
I think it follows the state policy.
Yeah, I don't know what it is, but we didn't have a policy, Danny, even.
I don't know if you guys ever voted on it. Did I ask Bill about this not too long ago? He said that they were discussed, but I don't think ever.
But we had an old policy, didn't we, now?
I know I asked Bill some time ago and he said there wasn't any.
I don't think any action was taken on it after a hollow discussion.
Thank you, Ryan. And I know for sure, certainly has Bill.
I thought the state was changing some of the regs.
Well, we'll get Bill to do some research and then we'll bring it up at the next, put on the agenda and then read.
Let's just hear Kathy's point, was the, were the regs about the trees in the right way or specifically about Emerald Ash?
I was, rather than the trees and shady trees, what we cut, what we couldn't cut.
Yeah, because one's going to lead to the other. If it comes to the point where all the ash trees have to be cut down, well, then who's responsible for doing that? The landowner on whose, in front of whom's house the tree is, or the town? If it's the town's, it's an overwhelming project. And at least some rip service should be paid to looking ahead at that.
I know, I know about it. Bill had said in a project of listing all the dead trees that on the ropes death.
That's a nap. And of course, with the E A B coming, there'll be more and more and more.
Right, I know it did, because I gave him two, I gave him a couple of trees on Little Thunder, but he added to the list.
So we are, in fact, beginning to do something about E A B.
Well, I don't know if it's E A B, but it's dead trees more or less.
Well, we have one of the leading experts on this topic right, and I named it Al. And I hope that if, if and when we do start taking action, that we tap into Al's knowledge on the subject.
What else, Doug?
Um, senators, this was a big deal in January and February. I haven't heard a word since. We're looking for more. Have we found any more?
Not yet.
Are we looking?
Yes, yes, we are. But the prospects are not very good.
We're still waiting for an answer from the guy up on the Houghtonville Cemetery. He owns the land in the back. He kind of, he was invested in that. I think he talked to his wife and he didn't say no, but he hasn't said yes.
There's a body knife for sale, maybe you mentioned, where we bought.
Yeah.
And so lady, there's a lot, there's a, if you go down, when you go to Chester, on the right-hand side, I don't know how fast, right?
Fast food. Fast food.
Yeah, yeah, there's a land for sale. And Don Lawrence looked at that with Walter a couple of years ago, and we were, that could be a possibility.
Is that to the owner of the?
No.
Where is it on 35? It's on High 35?
It's on 35. You can't see it.
It's on 35.
It's on 35, and the only way you can look at it, it's kind of a woods road, but there is a rope or string across before you get to the Eastman Turf. It's halfway in between.
Okay, before.
What's the Eastman called, Green Gates?
Never heard it.
Never heard it.
Oh, what about next to Houghtonville, to the left of the?
Well, that's, that's still open the air, but that's a, she wants to trade and.
Well, I meant where Ricardo was. And does everything move that way since they're new owners now?
Has that been sold?
It's been sold. It's sold last week, so I didn't know if we could approach the new owners.
Well, the guy that was, that owned his land next to him was going to approach it about there. But I don't know if that'll go anywhere.
I mean, last week, there's new owners to Ricardo, so maybe it's worth asking the new owners now.
They just said the latter's the owners.
Yeah. The Fisher, the Fisher situation up there, on Fisher Hill. But she was supposed to give us a letter saying that, I don't know the term, but the state was okay with it. And then we were, we had not had a receipt that had come from the state, so.
Well, they were selling the land that that had been sold.
That was another possibility. Not a good possibility, but it was a possibility, because then we're going to donate that property. Use that to, we went up to look at it. Green Gates, I think. No, no. Okay, well, we'll continue to investigate that, but.
My next question is, I think the town owns the school building, correct?
Yes.
There is apparently a study being conducted by the state of Vermont, looking at buildings of that era, searching for PCBs. Now, you've read, I'm sure, of the high school in Burlington that's been downed, and they're now teaching school in Macy's. And eventually, they're going to have to build a brand-new school because PCB level is so high, they can't go back to that building. If we, the town, own the building and they find that there are PCBs, because the building was built in that timeframe, I think it's more than 20 years ago, right?
Yes.
So the question is, what's our liability and what should we be doing in advance to overcome this or to at least be aware of?
I don't know, I don't know what our liability is, but I know that there's an issue with the water now, as it is. And in our meeting that we had with the state and Ty and Don, the state doesn't know what to do yet. So what they're doing to, with the school is that they have a filtration system, and that's being, that that's satisfied the requirement now, according to the federal of the state. And Bowman's property, he's still getting free water from the state until, until the state figures out how they're going to resolve the issue of those two contaminated wells.
Okay, it's not just water, though, it's, it's the construction materials. From that time, we were not nearly as conscious of PCBs as we are now. So they're apparently going into each school and they're running all kinds of tests, and they're coming up with, in the extreme at least, in Burlington, closing the whole thing down. So what happens to us if that happens in Brown?
I think that's, I mean, we don't know anything about that name. Just, I think you have to bring that to the school board to see if they have any notification from the state of an inspection of all the building. We would not, we would not get that.
Wouldn't it seem possible, and I just want to acknowledge that Charlie Bowman is on the screen and he may want to add, would it be possible to ask Bill to get in touch with Passit, who is our liability insurance company, and ask them about the situation in Burlington and to what extent we might be liable for something similar? Is it the Burlington High School, did you say?
Yeah. They closed it down completely and they can't go back to them because PCBs are too hot.
And what was it, Bill?
Pardon?
What was it, Bill?
I don't know.
I was going to say, because it has to be pretty old, I think Burlington's.
I read the, the sort of reports and all that, and I've never heard anything about this. I mean, I haven't heard anything about this Burlington, but I haven't heard anything about the state doing any kind of investigation or search.
Yeah, I believe they just extended it. It was supposed to be all done by, I believe, 2021, and they've extended it to 2023, I think, to give them more time to get to all the schools that have to be looked at.
For all I know, they could have already inspected it. I mean, I have no idea.
And they wouldn't tell you as the owner of the building?
No, I don't think so. They would tell the school board, probably.
Well, I, I think that, you know, rather than get this, you know, between that, since we own the building, the school board, why don't we just ask Bill to call Passit? They should know this. They're in font failure, they'll know what kind of legislation's going on.
I was going to say, because they're not on our insurance.
The building, the building that we own, we have a building we own that is not on our insurance?
They lease it and they take over all the insurance.
Yeah.
They pay for the insurance, but is that, do they, have they contracted for their own insurance policy?
Yes.
Ah, because sometimes when tenants pay, they pay for a policy that they don't have.
The way the lease is structured is that they do all expenses in pairs and everything else.
Right, I get that, yeah. Okay, so.
So really, really.
So we don't even have a copy of their, their insurance policy on our pocket?
Nope, there's no need for it.
Then I guess then we, it really does have to go to Jack, that's right.
Yeah, it's had to go to the school board.
Suzanne, this is Charlie Bowman, so you invite. Suzanne. I, yes, P F S is the water and it's different than PCBs, which are in the building. I have gotten no notice about PCBs, and I guess I wouldn't because it had, my issue is water. The, the state has no, no idea, they ran out of funds and they have no idea what they're going to do for the, for the water in my place. And they really don't know any, know what to do with the school. I have told them that I would be happy to allow the school to put a well on my property in my field, because they don't seem to have a place to get another well. But I don't know that that's been relayed to the school board. So that is the status. I am getting water still from. So that is the status. I am getting water still from the, from the state and hoping that sometime there'll, there'll be a resolution of this, of this issue. That's all I know at this point.
In the meeting that we had with the, with Tyne Bond, they are doing a simultaneously, they are doing a septic and groundwater study. So I don't, and they'll make a recommendation of what, of what they think is best for the town. Because there is a, we do have that water issue. And so they're going to be doing more surveys. I think they're going to be back and sampling the wells again and various things like that. So they, they are, they are going to do a simultaneous wastewater and drinking water survey.
But that's, that, that is what the state's waiting on because for some reason, the, the water issue and the sewer issue in the town seems to have stopped then. They're going to put new monitoring wells in, in the area to test the water. But they really don't have a resolution yet.
That is correct.
Yeah.
Okay, well, I'm happy, oh, I'm sorry, Al.
Al?
I just looked it up and there is, Vermont State Law Act 74 requires all schools built or renovated before 1980 to test the indoor air for PCBs by July 2024. So it almost makes it sound like the responsibility for testing is the school's.
Yeah, I think that's what we just.
Asking the Vermont Health Department when they're going to test is the place to ask the question. Asking the school board unless the school board thinks because of how it owns it, that we need to test. The discussion should take place of who's going to test it.
The school was after 1980?
1980, or built or renovated before 1980.
Right, this is where it's at. Yeah, it was 86, 83, yeah, I was gonna say 84, they started the office.
That's Kenny was. Well, I should. I should.
Yeah, it was after 1980 for sure.
I got it.
You have anything else, Don?
I do.
Go ahead.
If you go out 121 West and you look down, sort of opposite where Graves Land comes down, it looks like a carnival encampment down there with all kinds of stuff. There's no, no issue with the stuff because we don't have any ordinance to that at N. But I wonder about sanitation. I wonder about what's going into the river.
Well, three years ago, and maybe it was longer, but three years ago, I think, this subject came up. And Jake Harbin was the health officer at that time. He went down there and he said there was no.
That's three years ago. I'm talking about today.
We'd have to send the health officer down again. Ask wish to go down there and see.
Finally, I'm concerned and I think a lot of people in town are concerned. And we seem to be sort of headlong into a financial disaster here. When you look at all of the things that we are liable for in the next couple of years, you wonder how we're going to pay for it. We've got a bridge, which is, who knows, between a half a million and a million dollars of our money that has to be put into that. We've got a septic thing, which is going to cost money. We've got all sorts of things going on with elevators and heat pumps and what have you. It all costs money eventually. And the capital budget folks are saying they're having trouble with buying a fire engine and town equipment. Are we not, you know, shouldn't we be more conservative? Shouldn't we be? I know there's been talk of a bond issue. Where are we on this? Are we going to put more taxes on the locals or what are we going to do?
So far, no.
No.
We, we have the capital budget for this year. We know that knows what the price of the bridge is going to be. And if it is coming in at our share of, I think, the last estimate I heard, the bridge could cost as much as $10,000, $10 million.
That was not a formal B trans estimate. That's an off the top.
That's an off the cuff, the way things are going. I mean, obviously, you know, when we, when the capital budget meets again, you probably have to go to a bond issue or buy a loan for it. As far as the equipment and Trump said and everything else, the capital budget covers all that. So it's not an issue right now. I mean, we have no problem. We have the money to buy the new job. We have the money to do whatever we need to do to keep our equipment going. The, the septic system or, or what is treatment plan, whatever, that's a vote of the town. That's a whole different issue. Nobody even knows what the cost is. So you can't even, we can't complain about that. Whether it's how you.
No, I realize you can't be specific. I'm just thinking that, you know, we're not looking far enough ahead. We're not being careful enough with, with, oh, yeah, we'll do this. Okay, we'll do that. Without thinking about the people who pay for it.
Well, I think, I think we are. I mean, all this elevator and stuff is all the awkward money. So there's nothing coming out of, out of the town. And in reality, the, what we're doing here with the installation and everything else, we should have less, we should have better efficiency. So we should, of course, it costs less to run the building. So I mean, I, I don't see Charlie where, I mean, with Don, where we're not, we're not a problem. I mean, I think the board is.
And there is a possibility that the wastewater system will be paid for by federal funding.
That's also a possibility. But nobody knows, you know, nobody knows that at this point in time.
But that's what Tyne Bond would help us.
Right, yeah.
But Don is right. I mean, if you look out and think about the confluence of certain events that are going to happen to us in the town in '23, '24. I think that's what you're saying is, oh, how long are we looking at that and how long do we know what's going to happen? I agree with Bill, but with Joe, we don't really know. But I do think that there might be an opportunity here sometime in the future for us to just lay this out. You know, what are we expecting these projects to cost? What are we expecting or possibilities for sources of funding? And what does it net out to the town? I mean, we just had a record-winning capital budget and I, and Ken and, and the capital budget people keep such great track and records of all we do financially. Maybe it would be helpful at some time in the future to just lay this out and allay some of the concern that you just said.
But, but there is a concern, Don, from at least, I know some of the select board members and bills that, Danny, is that the cost of maintaining the tall roads and improving, we have tall roads and we care, is beyond the ability of the town to fix. And state keeps cutting the road budgets and the budgets for this stuff. And they keep putting it into clean water, welfare and other things. Unfortunately, we have, we can't do anything about that. I mean, I wish the state would put more money in and give towns more money because right there, it's big up. I mean, go ahead. I mean, it's.
They're doing one of the biggest expenses and you can see the roads either deteriorating. We put like 103 or 106 a year away. And now we're going to keeping it for two years before we even try to do like an overhaul. So that long-term lasts longer. But you can see just the streets, 35.
Sure.
I've been, I don't know, the prices I've heard this year for pavement, I'm kind of glad this is our off year because they're $35 a ton more this year than last. They're talking about $100, there's a ton of that paper.
I, I should know, but I don't know. And maybe somebody here does know. Our taxes that we pay on fuel, is that 20 cents a gallon or is it a percent of the price?
I don't know.
Because if it's a percent of the price, the price of fuel, or this, it seems like we generate a lot of bit more money.
We, we pay the price of the pumps.
I know, we pay, but, but how do they calculate, I know it's in, the taxes in what we pay for. But I just wondered if anybody knew, how do they calculate our tax that we pay? Is it a per gallon? But how do they come to the number?
Is that a question?
No. In the price per gallon, it's like consumer, the consumer. We go by, and we pay $2 per gallon and say that's 20 cents of that is tax. If you pay $6 per gallon, do we then have three times as much tax that we are paying? And therefore the taxes, the state is generating on a higher cost of fuel. Are they generating?
I don't think so. I think, I think the tax base is the same. I think that they.
I don't know.
That's, that's, to my knowledge, it's.
In our budget, we don't.
We don't.
No, it's not, I know it's not our budget, I get it. But I'm just saying that if the state's going to be a windfall for all this higher prices of fuel, maybe there'll be more money in the highway budget.
Just because they're saying that money, that money goes to the highway doesn't mean that that money generated actually does go to the highways in the state.
I hear it.
It goes here and any other places. It has nothing to do with the road tax.
Yeah, it has nothing to do with.
And the federal infrastructure coming down slow.
I, I think we got enough. I mean, there's a lot of, a lot of things you want us to do. Do you have any more on your list, Don?
No, not tonight.
Is there any other, is there any other public comment? Yes.
Seth, Magic, is there anything that the planning commission needs to be doing on the health of wastewater stuff at this point?
Yes, and they will be contacting you.
I won't, I think.
Yes, but Tyne Bond, we gave them a list of all the people that they, they need to talk to and contact. And the planning commission is one of them. So you will be getting a call shortly from Eric. And they'll be setting up a meeting, yes.
We talked about it last night.
Yes, yes, you have to be part of the health discussion. Any other discussion? Any other things? If not, motion to adjourn?
Move.
The next regular meeting is scheduled for June 6.